Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioner. Couple of things today, we have a couple of topics for workshop today. But before we get into that, I'd like to just kind of talk about this room for a minute. It's set up differently, we have different technology in this room than the last time you were here. Any can you just go through?
Well, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, I'm pleased to tell you this morning that we do have new technology in the room. So we have two cameras in the room that we are utilizing this morning. And we do have microphones that are in the ceiling. And so those are being used to stream to our YouTube and Facebook. So we're going to check that out this morning and see if you feel in the room that everyone can hear us. If we feel that those back here cannot hear us that well, we'll go ahead and get wireless mics. But we're going to test this out first and see if this will work. But again, we're using these cameras to stream to Facebook and YouTube Live. So we have removed the owl from today.
The one sitting in the back of the room, are you able to hear us back there? Okay, I didn't know we needed to put speakers back there rather than wireless microphones.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking into. So we want to, we want to see if this works and then if it doesn't, we'll, we'll start adding more technology to it.
Sounds good.
And then just wanted to let you know that we moved Commissioners to the back wall. So that gives you the ability to be able to hopefully see the screen okay? And then also to be able to see the folks back here a little bit better.
A couple of items for today, they've worked out the main item is the legislative platform, which is why our state office is here. This is a very draft of what you have. And today's workshop is for a good discussion amongst Commissioners to see where we sit on this. We made modifications, alterations, and then we would bring it back to you. I think from this point forward in BOCC meetings where you have the ability to take votes and move this thing through to finality. I think, and I'd be interested in what Jason's opinion is, I think we want to have this done by first of November or whenever Jason and Jessica think it's best, but we've got some time to work on this. So that's the first item. And then we've had a request to just kind of travel policy against that number two. And if we have time, Lindsay kind of wants to talk about some of the evolving ARPA situation. Treasury is kind of beginning to bring down the infrastructure that supports ARPA appropriations. And so Lindsay would kind of just like to talk to you about the challenges that that will bring as we move forward through the remainder of the ARPA lifeline. So that'll start with the legislative platform now, with Anya, if you wanted to kick this off.
Yep. So again, morning Chairman and Commissioners. Let me give you just a little bit of background to explain what we got to to this draft today. About three weeks ago, I sent a note out to all of our Division and Department heads asking for what they'd like to see on the legislative platform for 2023. So what you have before you are some of those Department legislative platform issues. And then as well, I met with you last week to understand if there was anything from a Commissioner standpoint, if they would like to see anything on the legislative platform. Also, you'll see that there is a little bit of a different format. This year, we've separated that into appropriations and policy. That was at a request from one of our Commissioners. And I think that is a discussion point as well, because what you've seen previously are priority issues and supporting issues of importance. So again, that's, you know, for discussion, how you'd like to see the format of the legislative platform. So Division and Department heads are here today. So if we get into any type of discussion, they're here to give clarity to those legislative platform issues. So with that, Chairman, I'd like to just go through each item and then there's discussion points we'll get into. Okay, so under appropriations, we have broadband access, support legislation, that funds broadband access through state funding or federal infrastructure bill.
Wasn't there also funding that came out of this so-called Inflation Reduction Act that they passed? They probably doesn't block that money in that.
I don't, if, if there was, I wasn't aware, there was an awful lot of broadband money that was in the infrastructure bill.
Well, I just didn't eliminate the one option that we had out there. Just make sure that we covered all the bases that are coming out of the government. So I don't know if you just want to.
So I think Mr. Chairman, you can eliminate infrastructure from that and just say federal legislation.
So there's no specific Kansas legislation that has been, that's far around broadband?
Um, just the, the transportation program has five million a year. That's ongoing funding for infrastructure.
Is that allocated per area?
No.
Yeah, it's through what's called the back grant, the broadband access grant, and it's five million, which was a really big deal when it was passed. That happened right before the pandemic. Now, of course, in, in that background has been oversubscribed. And I think they get like $70 million with your request for $5 million for the funding. But the real money that the state is working with is through the infrastructure grant. And then there's still some from ARPA. I believe there was 83.5 million that communities submitted dollars for or providers. And then we're waiting to find out what the formula allocation will be for the infrastructure money. That is thought to be a baseline of 100 million, but likely could be more. But I don't think Department of Broadband has the formula yet. They were hoping it could be as much as 400 million, but at the bottom it is 100 million.
Thank you, Chairman. As we go through these, I think we have to flag these. Are these just policy statements or are these other policy goals? Are these bills we're going to write? And this one, yeah, this is a policy statement, in my opinion. So if it comes up, we support this idea. That's fine to be in the platform, but we're not going to write a bill to say, does Sedgwick County going to write a bill to do this? I don't think we are. So I guess I just say, I, I think this is, if the topic is in the work, in the, under the dome somewhere, you know, we're positioned, we want more broadband access.
It's your value.
And a few of these, we're going to have to write a bill. Now, those are going to be flagged specifically because there are a few of them.
Yeah, it's just sharing with Tony, I might suggest on, on that, you, you have several buckets of money, state, federal, right now, related to broadband. There's a lot of money coming from the feds to the state that would go through the broadband office, the back grants, which Jessica just talked about. And so to Commissioner Howell's point, this is, this is really more of an overarching policy statement. This isn't something you'd be drafting legislation for. And so you could claim this by saying support policy or support policies that fund or funds broadband access through state and federal funding.
No, I think it belongs on the back of the page again. It's, it's more directed to our lobbyists. If they see opportunities, they speak to that when it comes up. We're not going to hand this to a legislator in the elevator saying, my three-minute speeches, oh, would you support more broadband? If there's no bill, we're afraid, that's not, we're not going to use the elevator speech for that. So.
Instead of being under appropriations to.
Well, this is kind of between policy and appropriations. And yeah, this is probably money. This is a money issue, but it's also really just a policy position of the county. So I see this kind of goes.
You'll have a lot of decisions being made by the Office of Broadband Development. And so it's probably important that it is on there. We want to make sure that Sedgwick County gets their share and that decisions are made by, that decisions that are made in that office are beneficial to the county.
Anything else on broadband?
Yeah, additionally, I think in 2019, we had a company that wanted to come in and put broadband. But because of our regulations, they weren't able to put it along in the right of way. So is this money allow them to put it where utilities usually go? I mean, that cost that they have to incur to put it where utilities are. Remember, Nextera, I think, was the company that came, wasn't it Nextera?
It's.
Idea, excuse me, that wanted to put it along. So I want to make sure that we don't have any policies in place. Like, do our policies, and I guess this is a question for staff, allow for where a company would come in and put.
From the coverage that's designated right away along each and every one of our roads with utilities. So I'm with Ideatech, didn't want to use our dedicated right of way. They wanted to tear up our roads. And we're not going to allow them to take, tear up our roads while the millions of dollars damage future.
Understood. Want to make sure that we don't have any policies in place or regulations in place that would hinder any progress. That's the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Anything else on broadband?
Can we move on to compare support workforce initiatives to include scholarships, loan forgiveness, tax credit for persons who work for CMHCs, PCVHCs, to increase number of behavioral health specialists working with high need complex patients? I can stop there, I can move on to the next one, and then we can cover it all.
But it's probably need quarter by quarter, I think.
Okay.
This is something that we've been working for some time, and it deals with workforce. Trying to make sure that we have the workforce that we need for compare. And this, I believe, is also supported by the Mental Health Coalition. So I, I do believe it's a good idea. But anyone have a comment from the first poll?
So she always said you can't write this bill. And this has to be, this has to be legislation, so I'm actually, so I'm actually having to draft legislation. So I'm just saying, we just, if it happens, we support it. We really want this to be done. We need to either drive the legislation by going and writing the bill. We need to write the bill. And we need to insert this in the process, otherwise this isn't going to happen on its own.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Commissioner Howell's point, and I maybe expand on that just a little bit. I think we do need to know, is, is somebody bringing legislation for it that accomplishes this? Because these are good ideas, but is Sedgwick County going to decide the amount of the scholarships, the amount of loan forgiveness, what is the tax credit? I mean, these are good goals that we should be supportive of. But when it comes down to somebody's going to have to write a bill, this gets really complex in terms of how much is the tax credit? Again, how does the loan forgiveness work? So I think it is important that the Commission give direction to us that, yes, if the Mental Health Coalition or some state association brings this forward, we want to be there to be supportive, we want to testify in favor of it. But it's a totally different animal if we think we're writing this legislation.
And that may be a follow-up, and I don't know, Tim can speak to that, if you know what, there is a coalition of CMHCs. Kyle Kessler is the one who leads that. So that may be the first place to go is what is their agenda? What are they going to do and what do you want to tap onto as in support of? That we would also work alongside them. And if there's anything then in addition to that, or that you're not in favor of. So with that, Tim, if you have any updates on their agenda?
I just checked to see if the association's written anything they haven't already yet, but we'll, we'll check.
And I'll just say, this is Joan, good morning.
Enter, don't mute.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm off mute. Can you hear me okay?
We can't hear you, Joan. Bye.
She says she'll follow up with the association.
We'll follow Joan and him, figure out, it's CMHCs are writing it, it'd be better if we supported that.
And again, so I think that whether they're, whether we're going to write the bill or someone else is going to write the bill, we're aware of it. It changes where the, where that belongs on, where that belongs on the platform. It could be the top, or if no one's writing the bill, it goes to the end. Just to get to the thing we support, we're not, we're bribing the legislation, we're even aware of the legislation.
Okay, stable and sustainable funding for 988. As a lifeline center, we must have a stable source of funding to support call center operations and mobile crisis responses required under the 988 legislation.
Jason, last year, whether they, there was controversy on whether or not the, you know, it would be added to the cell phone bill or whether it's going to be coming out of the legislature. And they finally got it temporarily. It's, it's, what do we have to do to make sure that we don't end up with a sustainable funding?
You know, the, the debate in the legislature is, do you, do you fund the 988 operations just through direct appropriation? Or do you create this fund that, that's funded through a surcharge on your cell phone? There was a lot of opposition to the cell phone surcharge. Of course, Representative Landry was probably the biggest proponent of that. But there was very, very little interest in the Senate in doing a telephone surcharge. So most things that state government funds aren't done through some sort of surcharge or special fund. Most things that they fund are through direct appropriation. So I, I don't know that I would agree that funding 988 through direct appropriation is not a stable source of funding. I, I think you just, I think our position needs to be, we need to make sure that 988 operations are fully funded by the state.
So would that be more of a policy than an appropriation?
Well, it is an appropriation, and we'll follow that through the budget process. So now that starts with the governor. So our first act would be to make sure that the governor includes funding for 988 in the budget. If that's included, that will be in there and we'll follow it that way. If the governor were not to include it, then we would be advocating for the Budget Chair to include funding for this item. So it is an appropriation.
It's been a very huge success so far, and we can't.
Yeah, and I feel pretty confident that everybody's bought into making sure that this is funded. Again, the debate in Tucunga is not over whether 988 operations should be funded. It's been over how.
Oh, you know our position on it.
What is the total cost to operate it?
I don't, statewide, this is statewide.
I'm talking Sedgwick County. What is Sedgwick County's cost to operate 988?
I think our presumption should be that it is funded. I don't know, I don't know, we have a problem here. And we, we know it's going to be funded, so. So yeah, I don't know if this is going to be a bill of clear why. We just need to make sure they know you have that position, but it's not something for us to, to shatter through the process.
Okay, you got another question on the board?
Continue to support the needs of the uninsured and underinsured. Restoring the promise of mental health reform, support a $3 million increase in funding for fiscal year 2023 for CMHCs.
Is this for the entire, so 3 million dollars is for the state, not for the county?
Correct.
How many CMHCs are there? Are we representing all of them when we make the statement?
This, this is in support of a statement that comes from the association. Many of the, I didn't say, you see this document, I think it's a human service function. You know, again, we work on behalf of the information statement, so many of the statements that are on this document. This is given, so we, we look, like, we, 2016, 2017, we might see an additional $3 million.
So the net effect of this is that offsets property tax dollars from the local government. So uninsured, underinsured are still going to receive services from CMHC, whether this is increased funding from the state or not. We're not going to change our service to eat this capacity. I mean, it's really that capacity.
And whether or not.
So $3 million, we're going to, we're going to increase capacity.
$3 million, our share of $3 million points to the map, which replaces. That's the same across the state.
And I guess what I'm trying to make is, it seems like our service, our mission for service is exactly the same, whether money comes from here or money comes from here, it's the same sort of suit people. It does offset our property tax, our reliance on property tax dollars. If, if they provide more money for the program from the state, then it does offset our budget, or our budget, makes it easier for us to budget that way for other things potentially.
Or it allows us to increase capacity so that there's shorter wait times to do the access services. I would, if, if this money gets restored, I would advocate that the property state accept this increase, that the Department should increase services and shorten the wait.
I guess I'd like to see some type of report to the Commissioners as to what the net effect was, how much should we provide? So again, $3 million is all that many foot six. So it's a half, half million dollars is our share, 1/6 of the state. What is a little half million dollars made in our program in Sedgwick County? Let's all please quantify that, so I can understand what we're talking about. Not right now necessarily, but later on. Thanks.
Anything else on the board?
Can you quantify that in a, in an example of a patient who has waited? For example, the, those who are seeking substance use treatment, walk through our doors, can receive a assessment the same day, but then are given six to eight weeks for a bed, for example. Or if someone is seeking mental health treatment, their wait time to a psychiatrist is weeks instead of days. Can you give us that example in terms of funds?
Yes, I mean, we can quantify it, it depends on what type of a staff person. But we can quantify it, we can provide stories.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one, enhancement of the Medicaid safety net and Medicaid rates for behavioral health by 10%. Identify, implement, and fund program to reduce the number of uninsured candidates, particularly those living at 200% poverty or below for behavioral health.
Is that Medicaid expansion?
This is, this is a recognition statute. It isn't one to Medicaid expansion, so this is encouraging them to create a shadow. Other states have chosen not to expand Medicaid, but we say 100% do the same thing. Seems like it's not that it's an expansion, or it's not true. So I would advocate that there's some, that's true, 200% operating.
But when the legislature sees this enhancement of the Medicaid rates, are they not going to do this as advocating for Medicaid expansion?
I, Jason says, is something to the state program.
My worry is it's going to kill the rest of everything that we've got that we're starting to advocate Medicaid expansion.
Well, I don't think we are advocating for Medicaid expansion. And this policy point is not Medicaid expansion. That's not to say that you might not have a few legislators here and there that see that and automatically think that it is. But most of them understand, there's an awful lot that the state does in the area of Medicaid. And increasing funding for different areas of the Medicaid services bucket is not at all advocating for Medicaid expansion. So I, I like the amount of confidence that Tim has in me, that I'll just tell you. But that is what we have to do, is just explain it to them. But this is what this is. And if somebody asks a question, we explain that it's in fact not Medicaid expansion. So I, I never advocated one way or another as to what you should do with any of these policies in terms of accepting them on your agenda, or not accepting them on your agenda. I will just say, I don't think that including this puts the rest of the agenda at risk.
Okay. There's a number of people not receiving. I think that's the reason we try to address this.
No, but we have to be careful that we don't alienate the legislature into our legislature agenda.
But we also have to take a stand in, in policies that support the, the idea that we are going to take care of mental health and behavioral health needs. This is one of those action items that is not just talk. It's, it's an actual step to, to be supportive of behavioral health and mental health that we've heard the past four years since I've been on this section.
We have 4% last year. So this is just pretty, pretty similar.
That, that percentage is similar to what we did last, what we asked prior years.
Jason, Jessica, I, you know, where we're at on it, to make sure that we don't kill ourselves.
I think, yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item.
Okay, increase inpatient beds for substance abuse treatment.
Good question.
Just a number of, like, how many, how many beds will we hopefully increase it by? Do we have a cost for that? One, if we could just get one, we'd be happy.
This, you know, we wouldn't have that. This is another one of those things, part of the Medicaid expansion. If they can increase the funding.
So again, I would like to recommend we write a bill that says we want 10 beds in Sedgwick County. You know, you've got to be specific here, because that statement on its own, it doesn't go anywhere. If you write legislation that says we need 10 beds in Sedgwick County, now you've got something. You put that into a committee and have a hearing and have the, you know, testimony and it, you don't change in the process. You've got to start with something specific to write that bill.
So I'd look at, Jason, just about the viability of something that Sedgwick County is specific versus a statewide in association.
Yeah, I think on this one, I probably would try to work through the association and kind of team up on, on this, on the statewide effort. This would be, if, if you keep this in your agenda, the first thing that we're going to go do is talk to the Budget Director for the government and say, you know, we need to make sure that there's money included in the governor's budget that increases funding for inpatient beds for substance abuse treatment. And we have a goal in mind for Sedgwick County. That's good. That allows us to kind of qualify that number along with what the rest of the state would need. And that allows us to kind of end up at a recommended dollar point in terms of an increase that we'd like to see the governor including in her budget. If they weren't, the governor wouldn't include that. Then we're going to appropriations and ways of being members and asking for them to, to basically put it in the budget, which you're aware they, they.
I'm going to give you a proviso, but that's, that's not really a better solution. I, I agree, I agree, there's going to be some work that has to be done. It's better to do it in a coalition state, completely agree. But this statement on its own, as it's worded right now, it's, it's not ready for prime time. We've, we've got to do some work to this to get this, you know, specific for, again, a state level policy. So if someone could write that bill, otherwise we're just talking, we're not going to, you got, you actually have to insert legislation in the process, so someone has to write the bill. It means state level perspective, let's, we talk to the right people and get the bill written so we can actually be, be specific. That's what we're looking, actually talking for, for Sedgwick County.
Surely the associations, I mean, these last three bullets, and there's going to be others that Tim mentioned that he was referring to. We're throwing numbers out there without any data or science, I'm quite a number for there. I mean, what does 10% get us? What does 3 million get us? What is, what is, I'm sure the associations are getting into the weeds on that. Have some type of data and science to determine why the numbers are in there that we're asking statewide. And I think they'll be able to, I think we flesh this out over time. And if the association's not there, we need, we need to get them there.
Yeah, but Tim and Joan, if I had support, let's leave that. Okay, you're going to go to the video?
Yeah, so I'll move on to the developmental disability organization. First bullet is to adopt the annual adjustment process for IDB funding.
This could be a policy issue that, that, that IDB funding.
If they were to, again, these are some directions to departments, the department. Forming us so that every year they adjust it. To keep up the place. That's the, is the policy.
Something certainly got changed with our this department. I spoke with a social work class on Monday and a woman has been trying to get her child into this program and she said the wait was seven years.
Yesterday, there was a legislative meeting. And we have folks on waiting list and 15%. It's a national state funded system. It's traumatic.
But I goes, I guess it kind of ties to the one hundred policy under all pay year strategy, go and make the state willing to work for them, work out the building. Because last year, when we agreed up the waiting list, like nine years to get on that, so it's I, I don't know that the one hundred policy belongs there. We need somehow, we need someone to write a bill to adequately fund the programs that we remove the people from the waiting list. Actually, I don't know if I like it, the one hundred policy, or I think it needs to go under appropriations. Had enough funding, so we can start reducing that backlog.
What would be the like, if in a perfect world? We got to know where it starts when I work down.
I, I have a question on this waiting list. It seems like the level of need. There's people who jump in line to get their services, their services are available more quickly than other people. There's people who are based on this list forever, maybe never receive services. There are people who are greatly, they have great needs and they didn't work at the front of the line, but the service is almost needed. So I don't understand how this waiting list works. Just because you're in line is, you're going to move to the front of the line in time and everybody goes back to the line. I don't think it works that way. Do we have an understanding exactly how this works? It, it does what we described. There there's an assessment that determines a tier score, which is the higher the tier score. Higher of place. So if you needs less, you will probably And I'm just curious, relevant to other states, are we, are we are we worse than other states? Or the average? Or what's the best state in the nation? Why are they doing this? I think we have I have to just raise a question time. There's always been a waiting list. I've been aware of this for a long time, and the waiting list is never going to go away. Someone said, if we want to, you know, fund this thing and get rid of the waiting list, I don't think that's really a pragmatic goal. Question is, is it, is it reasonable? If somebody has very, you know, small needs and they're on this waiting list forever, they never get, you know, never get help, maybe that's maybe that's proper policy. I don't know. And someone has great needs and they're on this list for, you know, three or four years, that may be a little problem. So to me, I'd just like to know, I've been understanding exactly, if this waiting list is isn't functioning so poorly, we have people out there that are truly suffering because they can't get services, the state's not funding this, or are we somewhat normal as a state? I just don't have an awareness exactly where we are. How great a need is this? Again, if we're going to reduce the waiting list to zero, it's just not So what, you know, what is that? How far behind are we? And then we have that understanding before we start asking for details about this particular policy statement. I'll try and get this. I'll see where we rank as a state. I know there are some states that are worse. It, it might be nice to look at someone at the front of the list, at the front of that waiting list, saying, what are your great needs and how long you've been on this list? If they say, no, we have great needs and we're on this list for three weeks. If that was to happen, that would be a confirmation we have a pretty good system. See, we have great needs and been on this list for three years. That's a real problem. Yeah, I just think we have to even look within our own state and do some analysis to find out how out of, how, how bad is this? I don't really know. Again, the idea of waiting lists is, is not what I want to hear. But there's not enough tax money in the state to fully do what we'd love to do here. So the question is, we need to understand exactly how is this, how is this working? If people in front of the list have the greatest needs and how are we going to go on that list? It'd be great to know that.
All three of these plus the one on the next patient or policy all have to do with the funding that we need in order to add a couple of fight service. So we need to quantify that. Someone writes a bill and I, again, I don't know if it does, or if it's someone statewide and organizations can write it. We need to know exactly what number we should put in there for appropriations to be able to fund that. But it seems to me like all four of the bullets combined in one, because we got to have funding in order to be able to buy a service. And we lose the backlog.
That second bullet, related target case. Last year, there was a new increase that applied to other services. Did not touch both rates have changed about eight to nine years. So that's the end of the system that's structured right now. But I the system how that gets allocated.
The question is, how do we tell Jason Jessica what that advocate for? I don't know that these really spell out, but we want them to advocate for it. We need X number of dollars to do these tasks.
I'll work with Interhaq. Interhaq was the system that represents the IDB. Or this is not something county should disclose statewide. So this, these are statewide policies.
Well, if all these policies, they, then they don't burn the appropriations.
I, I think they've I, I do agree on the, I, I wonder if we can't combine this with what I think we're wanting. And surely at state level, Commissioner House's point, there has to be a in-depth dive into how this works. And, and how many clients are, how many incentive camps are we talking about as far as clients that are not being served, gone away, but I think there has to be a deep dive of this, but to your point, Chairman, I think we can find this as one legislative platform issue, but it's going to be a combination of politics.
Well, we're anything else on TV?
Okay, I'll move on to Health Department. Support continuation of strengthening U.S. public health infrastructure workforce and data systems funding beyond fiscal year 27 and maintaining adequate staff levels to improve the health of the community and prepare for the next pandemic.
I don't think I've looked at words on here at all. It's just, it's, it's language, it has no instruction to legislate.
There's nothing that state associations don't know that we're supporting, except all the other ones.
So Adrian, you want to speak to where that language came from? Is that called language?
It, it's some called language and, and it really is to keep it on, keep it radar of the health funding. And there's supposed to be CDC funding coming down by the end of the year, that could be four to five years. And historically, when something happened, there's an infusion of that. And then it starts, it all dries up and then we're, we're in this cycle. And so it's the, I think right now it's just to keep it, it's just to keep it in everyone's mind, but definitely open how that can be phrased.
I, I just say it's a lot of words and to an, to a legislator, they have no idea what this means, it suits. I have no idea what we're doing with them exactly. Again, in the platform issue, I don't see how this, how this is going to belong to the paper. We'll leave a reword.
Okay, next bullet under Health Department is support public health funding to increase access to care for normal operations in public health.
What that costs. In an under appropriation.
We can take it off.
I don't know if we want it off, but that'd be something more than just a channel stage.
I, I got a question. Adrian, this topic for you, ADHE, is there a pair of moves, like, to learn from COVID and posture the state in the future for a better response? Is there a move, but statewide to increase funding for public health? If there's not, if we are on a high level on this thing, I don't see where.
I can push the state's trying to say this program happened after this program. Preventive funding goes down, but the way we receive, we perceive that diminishes. But we don't want to have a support statement. That's okay. This is just a reminder to the state, don't let what happened after any means of it happen now. There's a lot of money available over time at an initiative point where we probably weren't as prepared as we were likely to be. But it's fantastic. So it's more of a policy statement.
We can move that down in politics. These, both these bullets are spanned everywhere through this. There's a kind of lesson on federally, state, local. Trying to address that in the future. I, I don't want to blur any, the next bullet is really important. I think these, these two also on the degree. We're not the expert on that. I hope somebody will be ready.
We do have to be careful though, because if we cut funding down as we did before, we could set ourselves not be as prepared as we could be like, is what happened. So I, I think if we could look at these and just get a more, maybe not so generalized statement, work with the state or other health departments and see what they're doing on theirs and combine easier. If it wasn't just that alone.
Excellent. It's important. I just don't know what's going to happen after November. Because in November, we may get money once our committee releases. And at that point in time, my move point, but it's still a critical point at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the reasons we want to get the, your legislative agenda decided on and approved by the commission by November, mid-November is to the point that Commissioner House brought up several times, some of these things require legislation. And last year, we had a bill that was important to Central County that basically didn't make it through the process, not because there wasn't support for it, but because it got introduced so late. So we, we kind of talked to staff about, we need to be, we need move this up. And that doesn't mean that we can't take something on or that we can't admit it. So I think your language is probably fine here for right now. If we, if the money gets released by the committee that's, that's looking at the mental health plan that we've put before them and the smart committee approves us for an amount of money. This probably, this statement changes probably a little bit to more of support for ongoing funding of the state mental health facility that's going to be placed in Central County. But I think you're okay for right now.
Yeah, well, isn't it so important that I think it needs to be a compromise that they're buried down there with that? But again, it could clarify a little bit of anything with the future.
I'd like to say we can modify order succession. That's our to this procedure of the office, whether they will we get down to the end, which order everything comes in.
And tomorrow, they're having the discussion around beds at WSU. So I wonder if something might come out of that or we know if it's still sort of a one facility type adventure, or if it's a, let's put more capacity on the hospital systems that already have beds. You know, I wonder if that.
So the, the committee meeting tomorrow is really the committee that was created based on language that was put in the budget related to the money that was in the governor's budget and approved by the legislature for a mental health facility in Central County. And so that really is more focused on a single facility in Central County. You know, you'll recall, we kept running into the issue of legislators saying, what's the plan? What's the plan? What's the plan? And, you know, Central County was saying, here's, here's what we're doing. Here's what we want. We were trying to work with K Dads because I think that's really what the legislators were frustrated with. Who's going to run that facility? You know, what's it going to look like? There were questions about where, where was it going to go? And so as we got down to the end, it was really Senator McGinn that said, okay, we need to protect this funding. But in order to get it through the process, we're going to put this language in place that this committee will be created. This committee will look at how this is all going to work. And then they, they have to make a recommendation back to the Legislative Budget Committee by sometime in October.
October 1st, that's not going to happen.
Okay, that's apparently not going to happen. But that's okay. I think they just need to send that recommendation to Legislative Budget. Then Legislative Budget can release that money and hopefully we're well on our way down the road at that point on working on land acquisition or building acquisition, design, et cetera.
Everybody knows where we're at on this. I think, I don't think there's a question to always support.
I'm, I'm with Jason. If we ask for it early, if we pour on that, it's much easier to do that than we
Very good.
Stormwater mitigation, support legislation that funds stormwater mitigation through state funding or federal.
I'll just, I won't repeat myself, but once again, I don't know what we're telling the legislature exactly. So this is state, it's federal funds, it's a grant, it's state funds. Need to write a bill. We have the option, of course, to use local funding, which is what Johnson County does. That was, I think, a three-year window, Susan, not the room, but I think we had a three-year window years passed where there was opportunity for local government to do this on their own and Johnson County is only county that took advantage of that. So to me, if we want to deal with slow water mitigation, Central County, we might look at that opportunity. But I'm not sure to the state or feds, exactly what we're telling them.
No, we have this last year on the, on the platform secretary.
We're not sure. You had this discussion lots that you kept all we do is the county just water and do something more holistic with the cities. I'm not sure what state can tell on that. So maybe for this, you're okay. I, I do think we ought to have a discussion about locals, local funding that matches cities. Be bonded, bonded, whatever they want to do. But we're going to have a match, a, a match program for cities. We're going to have a budget for the county to use for more mitigation. We aren't going to flood again. Now, we're, we're very dry. We starting to have conversations about flooding when we're in a drought. But it's going to come back. We know it will. Everybody comes back. We, we beat ourselves up to say, why didn't we do something? So this is the time to talk about this. I just think we ought, we ought to ask our people, do you want government to deal, to deal with this in some thoughtful way or not? If he's, if he answered no, that's fine. But then when it floods, don't complain.
So what do you want both governments to, we've studied that it's a half a billion dollars to solve. I don't know that we're going to solve a half a billion dollar problem.
Uh, well, I understand that, but you're not going to solve that quickly. I think it's going to be something you do on time. You know, Johnson County has had a program that they, I think they used a sales tax. 10% sales tax generates a huge amount of money. If 10% sales tax here would generate $10 million a year. Whereas that with cities, you're looking at 10, probably even $20 million. Whereas that with cities, you're looking at 10, probably even $20 million a year infrastructure programming here in Central County. So $500 million, yeah, you get there eventually, but you'll start the process. If you people don't want us solved, that's fine. But I think the voters ought to have a right to decide what kind of government they want, what services they want. He put it together, put it in front of the voters. They want it fixed, we'll fix it. They don't want it fixed, they'll vote no. But it takes, for us to just simply say to the state, give us money, it's just not going to happen. And then maybe some federal grants, they're going to print the money, give it to us. Maybe that won't happen, but I wouldn't wait, I wouldn't hold my breath on that one either. So end of the day, we have a problem in Central County, we know we have a problem. I think we have to do what Johnson County did. And put this upon the voters and decide whether or not they want Central County to lean on this issue or not. If they vote no, great. Then when it floods, we're going to look back and say, you voted no. If they vote yes, then we'll do what they want us to do. But to me, that's the subject, that's, that's, that's why it's on this list. It's not about just asking for a handout. Asking for permission for us to go solve the problem.
But that's not what the bullets said.
I know, that's, I disagree with what this is, that way.
But the question is, is local issue or is it a state issue? I mean, state has a lot of issues. And flooding at a statewide level. Question, I think, as we should do one on the state platform here, you want to take it off? Focus on the same.
So on this, on our platform, if there's federal grants available, we're going to go for the grants, whether it's on the platform or not. Okay, that's, that's given. On the state platform, are we asking them to give us money or are we asking them to give us permission? We're asking for money, it's going to be a no, pretty much I can guarantee. As for permission, we can have, we can have real conversation. But so again, I think the reason it's on here is because we want permission, not because we're asking for them to access and give them money back.
I think it's a two-part deal, I think. Some of you did experience this for a minute, but we're, we're here, came up with two potential local funding. One would be the mill levy, which is probably the one that we need to create a sales tax. If you're not as proactive 20, 30 years ago, there was a window, Johnson County created a sales tax. And they, if you want to move forward with the local funding source, you need to be asking and do that statute, open that window up. And then that follows on with whatever I can remember specifically said, the goal of the project, if you're going to figure that sales tax. It wouldn't have to be a ten, but think of the maximum. I agree with him. Yeah, those are that getting money off.
And just a reminder, just as a reminder, this man has three members per commissioner. So again, it's, it's, it's county, it's countywide representation and they would help to figure out, you know, the program. It would help figure out, you know, how the program is structured. They would help, you know, make suggestions, we would eventually have to appropriate the funds this generates and approve projects as well. But this man within the activity, right now, there's no reason for them to meet because there's no money. There's never going to be any money. So SMAM is basically dysfunctional again, don't fall to their own. But every time we look back to the, to the commissioners saying, are you going to provide revenue to us to solve this problem or not? And as to simply look to the feds is, in this platform makes no sense. And if we're simply asking for appropriation from the state, believe me, they're not going to give money in City County specifically unless we're going to provide a program for the entire city of Kansas. And, and states are not going to do this. It's just, it's just such a low priority to the state. Every time it floods here, we get criticized for doing nothing. So I'm suggesting that we lean forward, let's create policy and give the voters a chance to say maybe they want, they want this fixed or not. And that, that does belong on the platform. And again, I think this probably was on platform last year because of me. Probably, I don't know why it's on there, but I'm going to guess it's the same conversation you've had, I don't have any thoughts. And again, so not me simply counting collecting sales tax and, and independently funding programs, but it's actually intended to be leveraged in cities to help them fund some programs or incentivize them to create programs to create solutions in their respective cities. And then some of the money would go to the potentially maintenance of the mission. The big dad, J Q, that word, I forgot the name there. Or potentially some, some string maintenance around the county. Right now, we're using most of property tax could do stream maintenance. And I don't, again, I'm not sure that's the right answer. I don't like property taxes going to that. I wish we had another source of funding. So I do think this belongs on here, but the way it's currently worded is not correct.
So are you asking that this be rewritten, that we can ask for a sales tax or increase in mill levy to fund this?
I don't like the mill levy, I do think the sales tax is interesting. I think I might give the electors an option to tell us what they want us to do. Again, if you can't have government without people providing funding for things they want. So either they want it or they don't. But I think we have to put it in front of the voters to find out what they want. So yes, I'm asking for the state to give us permission. So we can ask the electors what they want.
But in reality, let's get to reality. The largest portion of that sales tax would come out of the city of Wichita. And city Wichita's already have their own way of funding stormwater inside the city. Our, our biggest problem is in the unincorporation. And it'll never pass. We can ask permission, but you put it on a ballot and the city of Wichita is going to be 100% against it. And all residents in the city are going to be against it. It will never pass. Oh, is it something that we want to fight?
Well, I hate to assume though, I know what the electors are going to do. And, and again, I think Wichita would benefit from this because they don't have enough money in their budget to solve their own infrastructure problems. It would benefit from it. So again, I would argue that they would be against it. I think the end of the day, this is a solution that they're looking for. Again, to the, to the extent the voters, the electors want this fixed. All we have to do is ask them, you know, what's the majority of the people think on this? It's not a, not a referendum, non-binding question, it's a binding question. If they vote yes, we go do what they tell us to do. And I'm not, and I'm not even going to begin to say whether I would personally vote yes or no, that's not my point here. I'm simply saying that we have, everybody in this room knows someone who's been impacted by flooding in Central County. And there is no solution on the, on the horizon. And if, if we're, government is deciding primarily the things that people can't do for themselves. This is a great example, good government. If people want the government to step in and create infrastructure to solve these flooding problems across our county, then they should, they should support a revenue stream that does that. And if they want this done, and we vote yes, they don't want us to do that, they don't want tax increase, they can vote no.
Wouldn't you agree that before that we would ask for a county-wide sales tax to provide some kind of mitigation to stormwater that we would coordinate with the city of Wichita because they're the biggest portion of that?
Okay, so we can, we can ask everybody across the county ahead of time, what do they think? And get essentially buying of everyone.
They've got elected leaders, just like we, we asked their elected leaders over there. Will you support a quarter cent, half cent sales tax to work stormwater mitigating?
I'm not even sure I would support it. I'm not asking for them to support the, the tax. Imagine we support putting this on the ballot, put it for the electors. They might, they might personally be against it. And my point is, are they against us asking the electors? Are they against us? Are they, are they committing, if you will, support for tax increase?
I think you walk a really, really fine line. There's no possible way that I see the city of Wichita going to get behind this.
Then I guess the answer is figure out the pipeline, please. And I'll tell you what, when it floods again, I'm going to say, I tried, everyone, I tried again, over and over and over again. Year after year after year, I tried. We're not even going to ask the electors what they think.
Wouldn't it be worse forward on that speed for us to open dialogue with city of Wichita and see if they could are opposed to entering this on a ballot in the future with stormwater management? Before we ever put it on the, you don't go and stick a, stick in somebody's eye and say, hey, we want you to come along with us. You work with them and find out if they want something like.
Well, we have 20 cities, let's go ask all 20 cities what they think then, because Wichita is just one of 20. And I appreciate the fact that they have an opinion we need to listen to, but listen.
90% of funding come out of city Wichita. They're the big throw in.
Well, they have great big problems in what you talk to. And I think that, you know, this is providing the revenue to fix some of these problems. Again, I don't know, I don't, I hate to be presumptive about what the position of D S council members, but at the end of the day, if they want, if they want to oppose this, that's fine. When, when it floods and it will flood, can I, I will point the finger at what you taught them. They didn't want this. All I can do is put this front of the electors and ask them, what do you want us to do? And I'm asking the electors for their opinion. If Wichita wants to be, to stop this on the front end, they can certainly tell us that we'll stop it now. I'm, I'm going to stop it right this minute, Mr. Chairman.
I've tried to be a partner with all of our cities that have that information. And you don't be a partner with the other cities unless you have their opinion. We go and put something on ballot that's going to affect them.
Okay, I've said enough, let's move on, thank you.
We'll open dialogue and see what.
That can be SCAC. SCAC, just to talk about it. And you've also, you've also got numerous committees. A special to discuss a lot of things, including stormwater. I just don't know. I think it's a big what ifs, so maybe SCAC.
I might, I might let Jason just comment on the concept of water. It can be a big issue next generation. Can't talk about one simple of the water without talking about all of it. So I wonder if there's not a bigger discussion here on, we have a state drying up in the west. As Commissioner brings up, we have a state that floods in the southeast here. Is there not something that will be a discussion that we can have at a state level? So let us, let us work on this one a little bit, let's move on. But then I think the discussion of wondering how this state can provide water, we've got reservoirs that are a little bit of trouble. We have next bed that's a little bit of trouble. I mean, I have a huge, that's what happened.
All right, we're switching to policy.
Okay. So as you mentioned, we're switching to policy. So under aging, first bullet point is to amend KSA 12168 to allow for the option of having a formulate base question presented to the voters. It's all reference Commissioner Howell on this.
So as I understand that, that statute, we have one or two options right now. This is, the, the language was on that ballot question, 1982, is specifically defined in this statute. We have no latitude to change that, but it gives us two, gives us two options. Either a specific mill levy of Chelsa County levy, a specific number that doesn't ever change unless you pass out a question and change it through another subsequent question. Or it has its range, and that's what we passed in 1982. Chelsa County levy tax up to one mil for service programs for the elderly. That's what passed on a ratio of two to one. We interpreted that as meaning zero as a number, so it doesn't really have to do anything. Which means this has become very political. And I have worked with groups and the people in the aging world and none of that, but so the other people and come up with a formula that I think is reasonable, we can probably change the formula, but just as an example. Take the population of Sedgwick County that's, that's age 65 and above. Right now, it's about point 15%. She's accusing me, it's 15%, so you take point 15 times a factor. The factor is 3.3333, you end up with point five mils. If the aging population relative to Central County was, was 20%, you would have point 66 mils. If the population of Central County for 65 and above was 30% relative to the total population, we'd have one mil. So again, this is formulate based, based on US Census estimates, each and every year, we get those every, every year. So using a reference point, this becomes objective rather than political. And second to this, I'd like to see this funding earmarked specifically for grant programs. We can use a small percent, percentage for administration of these funds. Primarily, most of these funds should be used on grant, should be grant funded, grant funded out to service programs with performance measures. And so rather than this being political, as it has been for all the years I've been here, I'd like to make this objective and formulate it. And in order to do that, we have to just, the KSA to allow for a formulate based question.
Now, remember the, the people elect five people to represent them on the board to make the decision on how that we fund every program, not just aging, but every single program. So if justification is for aging, maybe we ought to do it for correction, mental health and every other department. I, I don't, I think that's the wrong approach. I think the right approach that we've done all along is that the people elect are those to make the decisions on exactly what we fund each different organization. And, and that's the way it needs to be determined in the future. For example, we just added a half a million dollars for the aging budget. And we voted on how to spend that the other day. So and that, how, how's that work out?
We did very well with the 500,000 contingency fund. Funded the hearing aid program, the eyeglass program, utility assistance program, food boxes and the purchase of a vehicle. The hearing aid program got started about a week ago when you got the contract signed. And as soon as that got met, the provider will put in a research center at 66 people that had already applied. We worked with communications and they helped develop a flyer for the vision program. And that was posted that and during a flyer was posted this week or on Monday, we worked with Karen Health to do the eyeglass program and make with a provider to get a good program in place. And so they will be getting lots of referrals very quickly on that. And for the utility program, we have a volunteer that is working within our program to help with that. She's going to be taking some intakes for that, we're getting that started today. And we've included home, given it signed up as vendors. So we've reached out to the Indian Resource Center, United Way and our own Aging and Disability Resource Call Center. And we know that the number one caller for all of those, so that we know that once we start getting referred out of our network, people start to date for that program, and that we will be getting lots of calls for that. We're finalizing the food box program, working with a, we have a new contract go through for someone to help administer that program and take their referrals and have we have reached out to our network of senior centers. We can see the public housing, many media, like 270 households that they needed help with those food boxes. So we're feeling very confident and really appreciate that, that need to meet those critical needs for older adults in our community.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that feedback. But I think it's important that, as I said, we, we make the final decision, but we don't tie the hands of ourselves or the future mission. I'm saying we have to do certain things. We need to be capable enough that we can look at every program that we've got. We've got 40 some departments here. And we have to be able to make sure that we provide adequate funding to each of those 40 seven departments. And every single one of them are critical. So I, I do not support anything under aging at this point in time.
So with our, last year at this time, we were in Oklahoma City on a city to city trip. And we heard an initiative around MAPS talked about was sent to the voters and the voters unanimously, not unanimously, but overwhelmingly supported MAPS four, which I think it was like 70 some percent they passed it by. Now, Justin Wagner has done some work and we can't actually do this type of program here. It would take a change in legislation if I'm under, if I'm understanding it correctly. But I think it's time to understand that there isn't enough money. People waiting for seven, eight, 10 years to receive services in our intellectual disabilities program. We have seniors who, senior centers who the lighting is so bad, there's no money to even help that. So I think it's important that we look at the bigger picture. What could we do as commissioners as a larger, the larger, on a larger scale? Just for example, the MAPS four program funded parks, youth centers, wellness centers, mental health and addiction, family justice center, sidewalks, bike lanes, homelessness, animal shelter, a fairground, a diversion hub, which helps people navigate the criminal justice system. It talks about a civil rights center, beautification, a multipurpose stadium. Just yesterday, all five of these commissioners and a couple of staff members had lunch in the Inter支bank arena. That was also a sales tax initiative. So we can pass something like that if there is will of the people to do it, sending it to the, sending it to the voters. I do believe is important that we, but, but we package it in a way that there's a little bit of something for everyone. We are really suffering in this community. And I think it's important to, to look big and think about how we can do some innovative things that other states are doing as well. We just have to work with the leaders in this community to make it happen. And that's what I would propose as a larger conversation.
I think the larger conversation needed, but I don't think we need to target one department.
My point is targeting a lot of different departments.
That's why, that's what I said, I agree with you.
A great legality of something like that, because I know if we want to do a census tax increase or something. Okay, legality of something like that, because I know if we want to do a census tax increase or something, we have to have the state allows us to do that. Do we have to have for each individual thing that we're trying to do permission, or can we do a large generalized idea, I mean, say we want to do a different thing to different departments that this sales tax increase will help?
Yeah, and I think Justin may be able to answer that, but my understanding is that you, you do need to get permission through legislation, basically.
For each individual?
No, I think you could do, have you looked at this, Justin?
Yeah, I think Jason's right that you, if there were, there's not already a statute that authorizes to go to the vote. There's one particular statute here on my head that has a whole longer list of different times the state legislature has authorized things to go to votes. And I, I, not a hundred percent sure, I think that's, maybe utilize that statute. So you can amend that statute, add another thing in there, you have to say a position, but for, and it can also be a question. Uh, so that's, that's a way to potentially do some of those things. Uh, but there are a handful of other very specific statutes that we're talking about today.
Like Douglas County, Douglas County was able to pass health, a health-focused um, initiative, which is how they got their new behavioral health center funded.
Yeah, so what makes this different, if you look at our budget, it has its own line item called aging mill levy. Why is that broken out? Because nineteen eighty-two, we passed a ballot and measured the census, we're going to do this differently. That's in the statute, and it passed, again, two to one. So we track that independently of other revenues. The only thing that makes this different, um, the, the reason I'm addressing this right now with legislation is because it has gotten very political. That, again, the range right now is zero to one, and zero is a number that potentially could be supported by this commission, I, I have no idea. But the range is zero to one, all it did was only limit us, our spending to one mil. But it passed, it did pass two to one, and I have to go back on eighteen eighty-two, the, the original intent of that was to create new funding for programs for seniors, and again, I view this as a mandate personally. But this has gotten very political, and you're, and the example of half a million dollars that was passed for the twenty twenty-two budget is a great example of the politics behind this. I wasn't part of the budget, it was off, it was essentially off-agenda motion. To say, it was during the budget debate, but it was, it was not expected, it just came out of nowhere, we didn't have any thought behind, uh, what that money, what it was going to do at the time. It was something just motioned and it passed. And, uh, yes, again, it's one-time funding. I, I don't think that's the way we should do this, I think that there should be some stability, there should be some you know, predictability in what this funding is going to do. If you don't formulate based, as the economy changes, as inflation happens, as the population changes, this formula keeps up with the need. So that's why I think it's a better way to do it, and again, people can vote no. But I just think that right now, it's, it's, it's overly political. And, uh, again, the example of half a million dollars is, is a great example, I just want to talk. So, I, I much as I appreciate half a million dollars and the things that it's doing, uh, what else did not happen is that Aging Advisory Council did not actually steer the use of those funds. We have a, an advisory council, uh, that is not being utilized to help determine how to best use those funds, and here we are near the end of the year, where this is now starting to use the funds, even though it was passed over a year ago. Past August of last year, and here we are in September of the following year, we still haven't really spent the funding. So this is not the way to do this, again, I'm not going to make this less political and more objective. And, uh, again, we could, as, as Commissioner Cruz just said, we could ask the voters about stormwater fund, if they choo- choose to support that, then we go do what they tell us to do. We want to have a mental health or, or, uh, behavioral health tax that deals with homelessness and substance abuse and, and mental illness, and have a tax, and people voted for that, that's fine, we could do that. And if they, people vote no, then it tells us they don't, they don't want us to. And just like that, right now, we've, they've already passed a question on aging, we know they support this, the question is, is the commission going to do what the people told us to do? And right now, I, I view that, that there's great needs, the needs are growing, but we're actually not doing what people, what people told us to do. Only, only way to resolve that is go get better, better clarity in the law. And this formula actually is designed to be, uh, it pivots based on economy and inflation and, and population of the, of the, of the age, of the aging population in our community, so this formula, it does make sense, it's a better way to do it. So I don't know why we would not support this, because it does, it's just completely logical.
So if we pivot, are you asking to raise the bill levy then? Is that what the question is going to be? Because we don't, I mean, we're already looking at a ten million dollar deficit coming up, so how do we afford the responsibly without the levy increase, or, or is that what you're asking to put on ballot to increase the levy for them?
So once again, I'm not asking us to support a, a change in tax personally and, and publicly right now. I'm saying, do you support putting this in front of the electors, or whatever the formula happens to be, is, we can debate that as a commission, and put the formula out there that we think is reading. I suggested a formula, just as an example, maybe that's not the right formula. If this passed the way I presented this minute ago, we would be at half mil, today we're point three seven. And, and one mil generates about, what, five point nine million dollars? So half mil is about two point eight million dollars. Two point nine million dollars. About two point nine million dollars, we're point three seven now, it's about two point two million dollars today. So it's about a half a million dollar increase, this is a pass today, as a formula that I presented, but again, it's the electors choosing their tax levels and their tax rates, they can vote yes or they can vote no.
But I understand what you're saying with the formula, my question is, are, are you asking to put on the ballot to increase the mill levy to pay for this? Because we can't afford a levy.
If, if the electors vote for this, uh, it would be whatever the formula, uh, determines. Again, the formula is not defined right this minute, so I can't answer your question, Commissioner.
No, but she's got a valid question, because, uh, you increased the amount that goes to one department, and we're already looking at a deficit for the future, you're going to have to find money to offset that somewhere else, or you're going to have to increase the middle levy. That's the only two choices.
Well, there's other choices.
You've got to cut services in order to be able to do that, or you've got to increase the tax.
Can I add something?
Sure.
So, you know, we talk, we're talking about our CCBHC, we're having a lot of, um, momentum toward funding prevention services, when we fund prevention services, we will find that things will cost less, we will see people not entering the system as much because they're receiving preventative service, so could we see the funds that we're shifting, I mean, paying for people to stay in um, our jail right now if they're not in our jail, I mean, if we reduce the number of people in our jail by ten percent, we save four million dollars a year. So I get it that we're talking about um, the over, I mean, I think we got to look at the overall budget, what are things that we could reduce with prevention services, um, that we wouldn't have to spend in other areas? So this is a really larger, larger conversation, I feel like we're kind of spinning our wheels here, I mean, I see your points that you're making. Um, but I think we're just going to kind of keep spinning our wheels with this at this point.
Well, let's move on, because the commission group, I believe, by eleven, so we need to try and get to this.
Okay, Commissioner, are you going to move to the corrections? All right, so the next three bullets are what came out of the community task force, so, uh, if you're okay, let me, let me go ahead and read all three, and then, uh, Stephen Stone, Stone County District, uh, support the passage of legislation similar to HB twenty-four sixty-eight enacting the Kansas Foster Mean Bill of Rights and HB twenty-four sixty-nine enacting the Kansas Foster Parent Bill of Rights. Uh, the second bullet is support the enactment of legislation similar to Senate Bill twelve, requiring the Kansas Department for Children and Families to implement performance-based contracts to provide an array of evidence-based prevention and early intervention services. And the third bullet being support legislative post audit to examine implications of the Kansas Stand Your Ground laws.
Why, why did these two bills at the very beginning die in committee? I was reading them while, while we were talking about stormwater stuff, do you guys remember why they died?
I don't.
We could go take a look and see if there's any information on them.
I'm going to put bullet three sixty-seven, but, but that has something to do with that.
No, that, that's.
I mean, let me talk about Stand Your Ground for just a second, I'll talk about three sixty-seven. The Stand Your Ground law, I think, again, I appreciate the work of the task force, but I, I think before we do a lobby for this at a state level, uh, I believe the majority of states actually have a Stand Your Ground law, and the reason that that happened is because in years past, we've had law enforcement agencies that have really gone after people legitimately had to do something difficult to, to defend themselves, and someone was killed in the process. It's a legitimate need for a law to protect our right to defend ourselves, which is constitutionally based principle. And we've had, and, and without the Stand Your Ground law, we have potential of people who were truly victims of, let's say, domestic violence, that will potentially be, be charged with very, uh, long, uh, difficult felony-type crimes. And the reason that these laws are passed, the majority of our states, is because we want to protect the people that we serve. Um, but you can't have a law for people and not have that same law applied to people in law enforcement. So the presumption behind this statement here is that people at JIAK murdered Senator Cloughton, that's the narrative. And they get away with it because of Stand Your Ground law. I find that to be a very false narrative. I don't agree with that narrative, I think our staff did the best they could, and it was terrible, the outcome that happened. I think it's more of a mental health issue, that we should have had someone out there at eleven o'clock on a Friday night who could deal with Senator Cloughton. You shouldn't have ever taken to JIAK in the first place, there's other things we should be talking about here. But the presumption on this, even being on this platform, is that Stand Your Ground law is a bad law, because we didn't want to go after the police officers or the staff that did this, as if they intended to murder him. I think that the, the narrative is, is wrong. The reality is, as I'm studying this, the vast majority of people who benefit from Stand Your Ground laws are people of color, especially women, especially people who are in domestic violence situations. So I want to be very careful what we ask for here. We repeal this, there's going to be a cost to this, the, the people will get charged with felony crimes, they will go to prison. Again, I, I, that narrative has not got after from anybody else. We assume Stand Your Ground laws are bad laws, because it somehow helps police officers get away with murder, literally. I think that's a, that, that's a false narrative, and I think at the end of the day, the evidence would never support murder charges on anybody who's involved in Senator Cloughton case, even if Stand Your Ground law wasn't. So again, the fact that this is on this list for the task force, in my opinion, is, is not an appropriate, uh, goal in our legislative framework. I, I wholeheartedly disagree with this being on here.
I think it's absolutely a necessity, this is a post audit to examine the implications, this isn't to repeal it, this is to determine what it means. How are they standing their ground when he's on his stomach, handcuffed in a cell? How is that standing their ground? I think that's what we're talking about here. This child died in our custody, and something needs to be done to examine the, the, um, the case in which our district attorney decided he wasn't going to press charges. That, that's what it is, it isn't to repeal, you're creating that narrative, this, what we're talking about here is to examine it. It's not to repeal it, it's to take a look at it, to see if it could be written in a different way, so that you can't use it when a child is on their stomach suffocating with their hands behind their back.
Yeah, I don't think the staff knew any of that, I think they were following it worse, they were told, they were told what to do, they did what they were told. And they didn't, they didn't realize this was detrimental to his, to his life. And so had they known that, they would not, they would not have done that, they did what they thought was best in the moment. And again, I think we should send down our staff, but at the end of the day, uh, no one there thought they were going to see someone pass from the act they were doing at that, that moment, so the, again, the, the assumption is that they intended to kill him. And that's just not true. So, uh, I don't know, I'm not sure this belongs on the platform, and I just say, I, I, I think we need to understand this more, uh, as a commission before we start asking for this, because the genesis of this, in my opinion, is a false narrative.
I agree that we need to look into this maybe a little bit more before it goes on our final platform, but I do think that, I agree, this isn't asking to take us away, just looking at a post audit, and what that looks like, and it's got to be more than one case, we can't base it off of just one incident, we have to look at as a total, what this does, what it does in our community, how it helps, Jimmy made a great point that who this helps and who it doesn't, and who it helps even more, so I think we need to have a better understanding before this goes on here, but I don't think we're asking. But it's, it's to look into it further.
Then we also need to talk to the DA. The students are along this line, I'm not ready for it, I'm not part of ten day.
We need to take a vote to see if we want it on or not?
We don't take votes, that maybe.
Well, why does one person, why, I mean, two, are you saying that two people get to not?
That's free right now, that's against having this there without.
Did you think against that, or is that I would like to look into it further before we add it officially on? But we're not voting today.
I agree with talking to the DA, DA should, should weigh in on this. Three sixty-seven, may I talk about that?
Sure.
So in twenty seventeen, they passed Senate Bill three sixty-seven, so we use that term as referring to a famous bill. It did a basically total rewrite of the juvenile justice, uh, corrections laws of our state. And several things that happened during that time, we, we, they basically befund it all with YRC two, that are criminogenic based. YRC two, there are still some sink YRC twos in the state. But, uh, right now, you have, you have a child that is, uh, uh, committing very serious crimes. We only have the options of putting them in kiddy prison after conviction, putting them in foster care where they mingle with sink kids, children in need of care kids. Again, the sink kids are primarily kids who don't have parents for some reason. And I mean, when, uh, the sink kids with criminogenic kids in the foster care program, the, uh, criminogenic kids, uh, generally provide bad experiences with foster parents, foster parents in the X program. So we've had a, a huge, uh, loss of foster parents in our state, which is really playing to the fact that now the kids, the sink kids don't have places, don't have placements now because our foster care parenting, uh, decisions because of having bad placements in the homes. Uh, we also have, uh, kids right now, they're, uh, underage eighteen that cannot be prosecuted, uh, under some of the three sixty-seven. So they have to make a motion for adult prosecution and move them to the adult, uh, adult, uh, criminal program. Uh, we have, I think, thirteen or fourteen murderers, juveniles, um, held in, in, in juvenile detention, that have had MAP motions made. Uh, take that back, we have, we have about thirteen or fourteen murderers, children, I believe in twenty twenty, um, by the way, that's a record number. In twenty twenty-one, I believe it was, we had around fifty-five motions for adult prosecution, moving kids from juvenile corrections into the adult system. Because Senate Bill three sixty-seven do not give the judges any latitude to actually prosecute them as a child. So again, there's a lot of problems with three sixty-seven, it's well-intentioned, it's probably eighty percent good law, but twenty percent of this needs to be revisited. The only reason this didn't go forward last year, my personal opinion is because the people, there are two people who, who are involved in, in creating this new law back in nineteen twenty seventeen. Since then, one of them has passed away, the other one left the legis- legislature last year. We had a very good hearing last year. And, uh, even the chairman of that committee said he thought it would pass. Um, but because of the person who was in leadership, who was instrumental in drafting that original bill, he knew it wasn't going to go any further, so they stopped the bill at committee level. At the end of the day, this needs to be fixed, this, this helps our kids, um, have, the, the judges and the prosecutors have better tools in the toolbox, we have better programming for these kids, we have better placement for the kids. It helps the foster care system, at the end of the day, all these issues are, are, are detrimentally impacted. You guys have some of the things that were in Senate Bill three sixty-seven. So, and, and as I, as I talk to Mark Bennetts, I've talked to some of the judges, I've talked to our foster care folks, they all agree, we need to do some fixes to three sixty-seven, so this needs to be, uh, a law that we introduce, I believe, as, as Central County. We helped pass or push for legislation last year, it was pretty good legislation, I testified in favor of it, as well as some, uh, district court judges, certified in favor of it. So, yeah, this, this does belong on this list.
I'm going to skip over CD, because we spoke on that. Okay, Division of Finance, House Bill, uh, twenty-six seventy-six, Ability to Create a Fund for Code Enforcement, Update Language Related to Use of Equipment Reserve Fund, Modern Technology, and Authorize Creation of, uh, an opioid settlement fund. So we spoke about this in great detail last year, uh, and I think this is just to run this forward, uh, across the finish line this year.
Was the opioid settlement fund a part of two-six-seven-six last year?
Was the opioid settlement fund a part of two six seven six last year?
Yeah, it was not.
That's an addition. Okay. That's the bill, Mr. Chairman, that I said nobody was opposed to. We just got it introduced so late in the process that we couldn't get it through. And adding the opioid fund is not going to put that there. We are getting funding now.
Amend Senate Bill thirteen, which is the revenue neutral rate law to allow for adjustments to the revenue neutral rate to account for, number one, mill levy rates set by law and rates levied on behalf of other political or governmental subdivisions. Two, assess valuation changes due to changes in use of property in their agreements. Newly annexed properties and properties coming in onto the tax roll after property tax abatements expire. And number three, the Consumer Price Index for the most recently completed calendar year.
Yeah, Jason or Jessica, are you hearing rumors that there might be some movement to make some adjustments to that?
Yeah, I have, I have not heard that either. I would just say I think this is probably a heavy one.
But you've been, heard a couple of county commissioners in other counties. Local representatives to take a look at. I'm not, I'm not sure specifically, but even, even the cost of the bail, things like that. Or probably that in some counties. But I, I, I'm asking it blindly as well.
Ask, make some additional asks, but I have some suspicions, but it probably won't be warmly embraced.
Yeah, and I would also say that some of those, I think as you refer to representatives talking to their county commissioners, when they're getting complaints from their county commissioners or their city council members, there's a difference in expressing a willingness to take a look at it and actually getting to be good at doing it.
Just for point of reference, you know, which university, University by law, it's one point five bills. So there is assessed value changes. They get whatever money is calculated. We just get a check. But the increase they would get, if we see the R N R, it has to come from something else in Central County. You have to take money from something we're currently doing over here to fund the increase to W S U. That makes sense? They're gonna, they're gonna get more money. If the assessed value goes up, let's say, just for round numbers, it was a ten percent. They're gonna get ten percent more money. That, that increase in revenue, it's a hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna come from someplace else in Central County. If we want to see it under, under R N R, I think it's flawed the law. And, and there may be a reason why some of these things are mill levy. If the law says mill levy funding by W S U does get an exemption, that would, that would be one reason to move some things to that model. But anyway, I, I think this is a fairly long list. I think it hurts us. C P I is probably the most difficult one on that list to include on that list of calculations. But I can see how you would write this bill and maybe, maybe not ask for the moon here, but ask for some of it. At least like, for example, W S U ought to have something in the wall that says we allow something as by statute required to be one point five mils. You enforce it, has to pull money from something else to fund that increase to W S U. That doesn't make sense to me.
Just so I understand. On that, on the W S U issue that you're using as an example, and, and let me be clear, I had all kinds of issues with this statute when it passed. There's an awful lot that you're asking for that personally makes sense to me. But on the W S U example, you're having to move money from other areas of the county budget because you're required to give that money to W S U. Is that only the case because you, you wouldn't have to do that if you actually voted to go above your revenue neutral rate? Is that, am I correct on that?
Right.
Which I know politically you do not want to do. I totally get that. I want to understand the mechanics of what you're telling me.
Right. So if we want to stay under the R N R, one way to do that is to shift money from something else in the county to fund the mandatory increase to W S U.
There's two other extensions that are exempt from that, right? The same, same, same theory, not just W S U, but there's, there's two other parts that are exempt. So they get the, they get the recognition of that. Or remind me, what does the once the mill, is it the mill that goes to the, which one?
Oh, the state mill.
Twenty mils. Get twenty mils to the taxes. And there's another one.
Which one? Well, the one point five mils. Yeah.
So it's the same theory, but you can pick on W S U, but there's, there's three that we have to fund no matter what.
Our, 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 our R N R calculation is depend on the twenty mils and one point five mils per state. So ours is just for the twenty nine point three five nine mils.
But the state has extended themselves.
They have extended.
It's similar, I think, in a lot of ways to three sixty seven. It was a law and a lot of good intentions that has some flaws. In fixing those flaws, I think you're gonna have some of the same challenges that we've had with three sixty seven. You have some folks who were part drafting it who feel very good about their work product and actually think it should have done more. And so I just see a lot of the line that they're not saying it's not worthy of making corrections to, as Jason said. From the beginning of this passing, there was a lot of recognition that it was flawed. I just want to be careful that we understand as we approach this, we are looking at potentially more than one session to try and get to where we need to be.
Yeah, well, maybe if you find that there is chatter or or some that, that you'll know that, that we do have a general feeling that we think there could be some adjustments, supporting of adjustments, something like that. If there's no, there's no chatter, I'm sure we should.
Hey, seems, I have to live a couple of years. I think this is, can seem to, that maybe this, yeah, gets tempered.
Okay, exploration place, K S A seventy six thirty six oh three, ability to establish a sales tax exemption on memberships for exploration place.
I mean, just to make them pretty much even with what the news do and it's not.
Philosophically, we have like fifty thousand sales tax exemptions in here altogether. And I am curious, when, when someone sells an exploration place membership, do they, if it's a round number or the number would be, do they, do they pay sales tax out of that membership fee or do they actually charge sales tax on top of the membership fee? Do you know? On top of the fee, on top of the membership fees, they actually collect. One of my questions would be, we know whether or not memberships would be more sellable, or is this actually having an impact on the number of memberships that they sell? Or number attendees to the, to the exploration place? Do we know how much that would change if we would change this law? I, I don't think it will. And, and the problem with this is, is that the sales tax goes to fund things like Central County. So we're asking for more revenue here and there. And we're also asking to cut the source of that, source of that revenue. Seems like we're just being almost hypocritical by asking for tax exemption. We're asking for more, more funding stuff, you know, just, it bothers me. And, and I think remember Dick Chelsea years ago wanted to address fifty thousand sales tax exemptions in the state. Other words, sunset everything and lower the rates of everything and, and and broaden the, broaden, broaden the base. This is doing just the opposite. Again, I love exploration place. I'm a huge supporter of exploration place, but I don't know if this is good policy. If we're the ones asking for more revenue for all kinds of things we think are important, then at the same time, we're trying to cut the source of that revenue.
Isn't there something with the museum? Because it's a museum and other museums or online are a part of this exemption already. I, I can't remember exactly how that.
There's a statute, this statute. I think the issue is that suits are specifically called out.
Have impact on the historical museum and African American museum and art museum and all that. I just said, if you go there, this is, it's gonna go to everything else. So what's the fiscal impact?
You say instead of just to be in, like, for any place that this bill would limit every museum, come, they would handle.
Potentially, I think if your legislature, if you have a, something like, it's in your community, you're gonna add an amendment to that bill, that's what's gonna happen.
Fair exception of that last year when this was on our.
No, because I don't think a bill actually ever got introduced on this. To, you, you kind of brought up earlier, Kansas is maybe a little bit unique in that we don't have these just variety of tax exemptions. So to Commissioner Howell, that's why there's so many. When you get into that statute, it's just this long, long list. You know, you, that's why you could have the trying to think what's the the club that meets on Fridays for lunch and Botanica. Rotary. So you can have Rotary on one side of which still have a tax exemption and the Sunrise Rotary not. Certain Boy Scout troops tax exempt to other, because it's a specific exemption that's been passed in law every single time. So you know, we could write the bill to say exploration place, but and tax exemptions, by the way, are very unpopular, very hard, are hard to pass. As, as simple and as good as this one sounds, I, I would tell you, it might be easier to go back and make the amendments to Senate Bill thirteen. Just because the legislature hates tax exemptions. And what you do end up seeing is, okay, well, I have, you know, Colby, Kansas, the area I represent, I also have a science. So if those guys in Central County are gonna get it, I'm jumping on here too.
So you, you, you do, you do probably run that risk.
I'm trying to throw water, because you know, it's gonna be realistic.
Okay, Fire District One, support an independent, independently elected fire board.
Well, prior to our budget adoption day, when we went to a lot of different directions that day, I would have supported this. But as of today, there's no possible way that I can support it because what we did on the budget adoption day is guarantee that the fire district, number one, it's going to be insolvent by twenty twenty seven. Which means that whoever the board is, whether it's us or an independent elected board, by twenty twenty seven is either gonna have to cut services or increase tax their million. That's the only choices that they have. And so what this is doing is saying, well, we just gave it to somebody else. Hey, let them worry about being responsible for cutting services or increasing the mill levy. We're, we're out of it. Now, prior to our budget adoption, where we guaranteed we were going to be insolvent, I'd have supported this. But today, I would vote against our entire legislative agenda. So this is on our legislative agenda.
Yeah, excited.
Okay, Health Department, support part of the K D H E allotment of strengthening the US public health infrastructure workforce and data systems funds to be used for K D H E leadership and staff positions that make information technology infrastructure and operability between K D H E and local health departments more efficient.
It's a question about this. Is, is there concern that K D H E won't use this money for that purpose? This is more of an agency request versus a
Human Resources, amend K S A seventy four forty nine fourteen for exception to the caper's penalty for any retiree being hired by caper's participants.
I'm, I'm gonna have to have more explanation on this because I know I came out of school, so I've got a little bit of background, but the whole idea was that we have administrators that are retiring from school, and then they're hired right back to school. So they added a caper's penalty for that. And so I don't know why the legislature would be amiable to turning that around. I don't, I don't know what we're trying to get across here. I don't see a possibility of it passing.
I'd like to see the state commission talks specifically to employees that we have seen in the scenes, but that's a narrow there are untapped potential employees for common care, for example. Retired school teachers, retired counselors, all sorts of those that could help address behavioral health. I would think this is a bit narrow, but then it excludes other parts of the organization.
Well, based on the very chance of my business plan.
You know, the, bringing up the workforce concern is probably something that legislators would at least be willing to listen to. That said, though, they've worked really, really hard to try to shore up and, and fund our state retirement program. And so if they, I think if legislators thought that those, the potential to cost retirement fund more, they'd be very reluctant to go into that.
And if you can get it narrow enough, problem is that it looks kind of broad to me. And I don't think that we'd ever get there.
And I think that's our worst health with those, but I asked for it to open up because we wouldn't have a way of being able to track any individual if they were just working through home care as a retiree and then possibly transferring to somewhere else.
It has to be crafted in such a way that it would cost you. That whole thing was great. That has to be excluded from the conversation. But I would have to leave other counties, Joko and the other urban counties, have to be talking about this because it's a workforce issue. Try and shore up workforce and there's a population of people who can't do it. Because of this, that matches it. But I do agree, it has to be crafted in such a way that it can't cost, can't double it. So there's a, there's someone out there that understands the job, but they would love to hire, they can't hire because they're, they receive capers benefits. I, I think we hurt ourselves with correct policy. So I, I think, I think the incentive needs to be removed. Other words, if they, if they retire, start taking capers benefits, they can't be hired the next day. There should be a period of time they have to, it was a penalty to get from being dependent upon staff to, to receiving benefits and being hired back. That should be six months or something, but is there, is there a period of time right now they have to wait?
Commissioner, I believe it is six months now.
And then after that, there is no caper's penalty?
There is.
You can't anything but twenty five thousand dollars. Of being rate thirty percent. You could raise, if you wanted to get some of the lower pay, you could raise twenty five or fifty or sixty. The incentive for upper management.
And they don't receive any further capers benefits as they, they're hired after.
Anybody, I don't know if it's double different, but you don't, you don't pay any benefits then and you don't get any additional benefits by going back to work.
I think it's a missed over. The idea of double different totally is not what that is.
Then we talk to employers, employers can spend in the capers for something the employee doesn't get.
The employee receives their benefit until they hit twenty five thousand. And then that benefit stops from here.
Their current, their existing.
They're retired.
Do you think this would come up statewide even? You see, for these care workers, wouldn't this be a nationwide?
I, I think it's a workforce. I mean.
Right. I, I think it's one, I don't know that we have, we have, there, there has to be a distortion. And I think maybe it's all county, Western Kansas is having a hard time staffing teachers and everything else, closing schools. But they can't find workforce. I think any of the same it seems on a county base, but they have, they're really allowed to participate in capers. So that's a, same situation. That was why my recommendation was to narrow it to only employees. The address is, that's a whole workforce shortage across the state and benefits of us. Also, there's a phenomenon happening all around the country right now, unretirement, people retire and the economy changed. So they gotta go back to work and why not hire them in the, in the job they're most qualified for? They didn't intend to abuse the system. We want to hire them and they want to work, but we can't because of this. It just seems like I, just my thought would be the, the six month wait is reasonable as a disincentive to just simply abusing the program. But I do think that they ought to be continued to be required to pay the six percent to four fifty seven and eight percent from the employer's four fifty seven. And there should be, you talk about limit on benefits. If they're working after retirement, the benefits are, are limited to, you said, twenty five thousand. So we ask reasonable. So there's, there's disincentives and built into this. This is a good year for us to take a look at the working after retirement law. Yeah, I was on, I was vice chairman of the Pensions and Benefits Committee for several years and I, I think there's a desire for us to solve this. And I think that, again, as long as that's a hard to state pension fund, I don't know why we would not address it this year.
Let me make sure I'm clear. We get the penalty because we put them back into capers and we're paying capers back to them, correct? That's why we're getting.
The employer pays.
The employee pays to caper.
Employee does not pay at all. The employer.
Okay, but it's because we put them back in capers, they're, they're contributing to capers.
The employee, the retiree who is rehired is not contributing back.
But we are paying back into it.
The employer is, yes.
But it's to fund the capers program. If they want to work for the spirit, they wouldn't, they'd be still drawn their capers. But Spirit would put them in their own retirement plan, right? It's going to have no impact on, on capers whatsoever. There is, they're going to continue to pay. So if we hire, hire them back, we put them in our plan, we have to put them in capers.
Yes, we list them as a retiree and then once they hit their threshold, we pay them thirty percent.
Why do we have to put them in the capers? Why can't we hire them back and put them in our 401K or something?
So our physicians are responsible.
Because what?
They're capers eligible physicians.
So how do we make them, just how do we solve it locally? How do we not put them in a capers required position? How do we put them into a position and then put them into a 401K instead?
Our solution right now would be to put them into a part-time position. Because full times would be.
And who drives, local or in state, who drives that requirement? Put them in a part-time instead of full-time.
We, we would dictate whether it was a full-time or part-time position.
But the state drives it. Yeah, it's the only option.
Yes, that, that is in the statute, yes.
Why do we have to say it's a capers position? Let me give you a great example. I'm retired. I'm drawing capers. I am not in capers. Why can't we do that in the other?
All of our county physicians are.
How do we change it? Is there a change we have to make or is it?
No, it's a state change.
I think it's different selected positions to automatically. And that's why the county offers you different options. I mean, I think it's more of a policy thing, more than a wind, I mean, it's a windfall for capers, I mean, I mean, your county paying, even on the first twenty five thousand, the county paying the normal rate, then anything over twenty five, you pay thirty percent bill. All of that is just an incentive for capers telling telling employees, you can't go back to work in a capers system and collect your retirement. Now, maybe that's a good policy or not, but it's a windfall for capers right now that employees come. And because the employee gets nothing. I can see it if you're rolling back, today you've got this job. You're the county councilor and you retire as county councilor today, we hire you back as the county council. And on payments, I can see that, that there would be a penalty. But if we go out and we hire a school teacher and we bring him in and we tell him that you're going to be a social worker today, you have that degree. I can't see why there's a penalty.
Because it's. The question is.
How do we make it an uncapers position? How do we locally say, you're not being hired? You were a school teacher. Disregard that. Today, you're a social worker.
If it's a full-time position, it's not state law. So that's what I think we would need to change. There's, I think there's different ways to tackle it, but we would need to have some new ways.
Capers does have, does have a four fifty seven program. It's still called capers. But it's a 401K type program and I think we should just put them in that and require the employee, any employer to, to, to value to that. So treat them like a regular employee, but the money goes there instead of the pension pay.
I'm not adverse to having something on our agenda. We just need to clarify it today because I think there's there's black and white on these things. There's areas where I don't know that I agree to not have to pay a penalty. If you're a superintendent for a school and you retire and the next day you go back to that work for that school that trip, right? I, I think that there is a problem there. But we have a lot of people, we need to hire in the workforce and the other people need to hire in the workforce that don't need that penalty.
And I think that's what we're saying is there's a potential.
You guys are smart. You come up with something.
We just need help at the state.
Well, we may need to work. I've already killed it right now. I think we need to figure out something. All right.
Okay, Public Works amend KSA five twenty E provisions that allow the county essentially to acquire annexation when a city is adjacent to the right of way. County counselors, when is there some deficiencies that should be clarified, strengthened? Come on, the next one. Men, KSA sixty eight eleven oh six to no longer require passage of a specific resolution declaring a project necessary every time that a county share of a project exceeds two hundred fifty thousand. Alternatively, it could indicate that the project must be included in an approved capital improvement plan. Okay, I'll move on to the next one. Remove requirement in KSA sixty five twenty one that requires a county engineer to provide an engineer's estimate for every project and prohibits accepting a bid that is more than one hundred and ten percent over the estimate. This requires rebids for projects. These rebids tend not to change the project bids as contractors tend to honor the earlier bid. Makes sense for the V O C C to see the estimate that they should not be included from accepting a higher bid. Last one then being suspended driver's license law, criminal justice reform review, the minimum sentencing guidelines and the forever look back law. And I'll reference commission columns.
We passed a law a couple of years ago that touched this, but it required this, this law provides discretion to the judges and prosecutors to work with the offenders to get, to keep them legal and able to drive and, you know, put to work and things like that. Unfortunately, I, I think Wichita has not really provided a discretion to their prosecutors and judges. And so I, I heard just on the radio this morning, we, we just reported a program to help deal with some of these people that have one or two thousand dollar fines. We just talked about that, but considering where we are. I'll check this at the beginning. We were going to fund a position inside the county that would help people navigate. It's work in progress. My point is that as of right now, we have about fifty five to sixty thousand suspended arms in, in Central County alone today. And so and part of the problem is that people who might make a minor traffic infraction, you don't pay their fine, end up getting the suspension because they don't pay that fine. Then they get caught driving on suspended three allergy of six months, six months minimum time in jail. And it's happening. So first of all, I think the forever look back law should be changed in some five years or 10 years or something. So it doesn't go back forever. Make a stupid mistake when you're eighteen years old or whatever, and you're forty years old now, to me, it just seems it's, it's a bit punitive to go back that many years. And say you made a, if you failed to pay a traffic fine, end up with suspended license. And that's an incident, you have three of those, you have six months in jail. And we are having this problem. Second of all, I think there should be some requirement for cities to work with these offenders to keep them on a restricted license. They, they need to go to work. And if they're trying to climb out of a hole and make, they can make payments over time, follow their compliance with court mandates. Again, the, the, the cities have discretion to lower the fines and, and to change it from a suspended driver, driver licensed offense to a non-suspended driver licensed offense. The prosecutors have that, let that slide in right now. They're not doing it in Wichita. At the end of the day, we have we have so many people have very high fines, but they're climbing, they're trying to climb out of a hole. They can't go to work to make the money to pay the fines. So it's just, it doesn't make sense to me. So if someone is in the nonincontent of court, they're trying to do the right thing, make their payments, they should at least get a restricted license so they can go to work. And many of the suspensions right now for things like, for financial penalties, like failure, failure to be child support. Well, that makes no sense to take someone's right to go to work away from them. They have to make money to make child support. This is, this doesn't make sense to me. So again, we're not there yet. We, we, I think that number one, cities ought to be required to work with the offenders if they're, if they're doing the right things. There should be something in the law that encourages them to essentially make a deal with the offenders to, to have a restricted license. And second of all, the forever look back law ought to be limited to a certain number of years. That's it.
Cities, let's see which town we opposed to this.
I can imagine because they celebrated with Laura Kelly, the pastor of the library, they celebrated, and yet they're not doing what the law allows them to do. I talked to the judges over there, prosecutors over there, they're, they don't, they don't seem to have the latitude from their leadership. And I'm not talking about city council necessarily, I'm talking about administrative leadership over there to actually exercise discretion. District court, they're doing this. They're exercising discretion in district court, but they're not city court. Wichita seems to be alone on that. I think other cities are, are, are exercising discretion on their cities. But again, but again, the, the discretion is discretionary. They don't have to do it and Wichita's choosing not to do it. And as a consequence, again, it's sixty thousand suspended driver's licenses in Central County, primarily from Wichita. And these people don't have insurance. They're still driving around. They have to go to work to pay the to buy milk and food for the kids and pay the child support. They're still going to work. They don't have insurance. They get into offender behavior. This thing just snowballs. It gets worse and worse. They feel like they're desperate. They have no choice. What are they supposed to do? Public transportation is, is lacking in Central County, City of Wichita. These people have no options. They have to quit their job and and, and not make money, or they have to do something else. And they can't afford other options like Uber, taxis. Public transportation, there seems to be no solution out there. So again, a restricted license gets them back to being able to make money. And we should be able to work with them and you get off of that big deal to make, make their payments over time. And then the forever look back law should be changed. And this just makes sense. Why Wichita's choosing to do it this way? I have no idea. I've talked to some of the city council members over there. They don't know, they don't believe. This is not just impacting Central County. This is a statewide problem. And we have one fourth of the state's problems here in Central County, one, one sixth of the state's population, one fourth of the state's problems in Central County. So this is a statewide problem.
Hey, Jason, Jessica, you got any advice?
No, sir. Didn't want to add again, sort of the line. It seems like some of our issues is both between Wichita City and statewide level that you're talking about or other, these, what you're recommending here on the verbal look back, that's a statewide.
Well, the problem is, again, whether Wichita chooses to exercise discretion on, there's, there's, they have the chance to do this under the law. They're choosing not to do it, but that's really beside the problem. The forever look back problem is still a problem. So we need to do something with that, no matter what. And I think the idea of giving, giving these folks a restricted license while they're, while they're trying to pay off their fines makes sense. That would make statewide. That's a statewide problem.
Find anything else on, let me say.
No, what I'd like to do is just take some time and go back and make some revisions and unless the manager disagrees with this, take this back at a commission meeting and present this on the legislative issue items until we can get to a point where I think we're ready to take this vote and then we'll put this on as a regular business item.
If there's anything else that the commissions did not realize that they Tommy said, we'll work with our lobbyists, you see it again.
Are we going to do travel today or are we going to play?
I'm ready, but I think we'll excuse the lobbyists. Thank you for your time. Commissioner, I have. Thank you, guys. Jessica, welcome to the, welcome to the sausage.
Yeah, there's only one left, one of my students, but all, not all of them, but a few of my students were here today from WSU. This is normally when we meet, so they came for a real life experience, I think, and especially here in the practice, so with that.
Commissioner Greff's travel policy in front of you. Three, three sheets of paper. The first two pages are the existing travel policy of Central County two point one oh six. We revised this policy very early this year. We actually discussed it late last year. We revised it and on the back page is the option machine. I provided permission back here on options we can use. If we want to be inclusive of the commission in this travel policy, those were three options that I addressed back to, we couldn't really get traction a year ago with body. We moved forward with that, so we, we left it and we went on with two point one oh six the way of the dance. So we want to revisit that again. For sure, the candidate's options, that's not to say that that option list will exhaust it. There may be something. You guys may have a better idea of what you want to policy there, but.
On that, well, option three is not acceptable. It's just too, it's unpredictable. The option one or two is fine. I would like to add that we all have our different strengths when we travel. And purpose, now, some of my travel includes includes economic development, which also has a NDA disclosure agreement. So free, say something, I there would be, I would be, but that would just become, we need to be able to. At the end of the day, if something happens, that's great. Could report that. If something doesn't happen, that's, that's still reportable. But during that NBA period, economic development, it's that, that would, that would really hand government, one of those, myself or somebody else. If we did it without an NDA exemption, we would be not invited to help support. Government issues, but.
I understand that we could, Sam Lang, which is NDA.
Some strategic stuff because Bishop Lopez's last trip to Washington is very strategic. Although she covered a lot of departments, there was, there was one very strategic meeting she had to have. We fall into that.
I think you should redact the things that are sensitive, but otherwise it shouldn't be treated normally. If there's something that's, you know, if it's going to a particular city is the part that's NDA or meet with a particular company or whatever, redact those things because there's a reason to redact them. But otherwise, I just think it needs to be disclosed. I just, you know, I, I don't like the idea of, you know, I'm, I'm I think I'm in there, I've traveled at least out of the five of us today. It might change in the future, but I travel, I don't travel much. Uh, it might change in the future, but I travel, I don't travel much. Um, so this isn't, this isn't gonna hurt me, uh, as much as it may hurt my colleagues, but. To me, what I'm really after here is, is public transparency. So knowing that, whether you get a permission, I don't want to say you'll get permission because we're equals, I don't want to ask you mine as my boss. I do think that, for a reason taxpayer money, three of you should agree that they're spending money for things that are important. So there, there is that, uh, three of us should vote for the expenditure, so to speak, but. Uh, if I don't have support of my colleagues, then maybe I should pay for this on my own, that's another way to look at this. But I think the most important part of this is the mission, why did you travel? When did you travel, where did you travel? Um, and your basic expenditures, what did travel cost, hotels and meals, lodging and meals, uh. Ought to be disclosed to the public, and then there should be some kind of post trip, post trip reports. If, you know, unless there's an NDA, I don't know why we would not just explain to the public or the, our colleagues or the taxpayers. We spent so many to go do this thing, I brought back some information. We're gonna use, I'm gonna develop some policies here, or I learned some things that are relevant to Central County, or it's a. You know, we, we looked at a facility or something, I don't know, I think there's reasons why we go on trips, and so. To me, just explain to the public, I think disclosure is the key here, so people know what's going on. I tell them after, I think, for us to ask permission. I don't know if I like that, but again, since we do have to appropriate the funds to cover the cost of the trip, I don't, I guess I'm not against the idea. I do think the post trip report and the transparency is the most important, most important part of this, and there are these options through those.
Why do you do this?
You know, it doesn't talk about the details of what you spent, and where did you go, why did you go, when did you go? Doesn't talk about that.
I can, I can bolster option one to be, that's the spirit of option one that you guys would run it. You put it out to the board before you win it. Here's what I mentioned, here's how much I was gonna spend, you, you put it out under option, I can bolster. Or I can bolster option two, different option one is, or two is, three rules posted. Have you guys?
Me are individuals who are elected and who need roles. David, Jan, he, they're not my boss, it's my constituent, that goes for all of us. So why would we need to get approval from our peers for doing county business? Now, I agree when we get back, if we do a post. Before or whatever that looks like, absolutely, we should be telling what we did as long as it's not such a time. Um, but I don't necessarily think that. Sure, this is a travel somewhere, but I need to prove that, that's not my job.
Uh, I think it's our job to approve spending of taxpayer's money. We have to be transparent upfront that we're spending taxpayers' money. We don't go out and buy vehicles, we don't go out and buy computers, we don't buy, buy anything unless we're open and transparent beginning. So, uh, I'm not saying that we're approving your travel, we're approving the expenditure of taxpayers' money. And that's something that needs to be open and transparent rather than. I have, uh, our two secretaries sworn secrecy that we can't tell you where we're going or when we're going. And then when we get back, we're gonna bill the county, that's not the way we do it.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I think if we're traveling, then we should, all commissioners should know where we're, where we're going. I don't necessarily think that needs to be public until we get back, and I have young kids at home, so I would worry if I. I mean, now, if I make the decision at the time that I'm worried about it, but there are instances where my kids are threatened because of this job. And if I'm not comfortable, I had to travel right after that happened, I would not have been comfortable putting that up publicly at that time. Um, so I think there's some sensitivities there, but I don't necessarily think that you should not know as my colleagues before. So I think there might be a, a way to go about that without the public.
And then you would get to the transparency openness that opposed.
Yes, yeah.
So to, to your point, again, if you believe this is county business and it's important. We might even disagree with you, but if you believe that as elected official, your electors and your, your people in your district are the ones that really matter. To me, I, I see the sensitivity of security, I don't tell people I'm going on vacation until I get back. And every reason, I don't want people, my house is empty. Uh, for a number of days, and that's, that's not safe, so it's just best practices to maybe not do that. I think there's obvious things that I think ought to be covered, KC, Naco. Uh, city to city tours, things like that, if, if those are the types of travel, or you're gonna go down and see something that makes. You know, a mental health facility, you wanna see how that works. To me, those things ought to be, you should expect those things to be approved. Um, if you do something that's vastly different and unusual, I think we're gonna have some type of. My other concern is, Commissioner Lopez, she spent three thousand dollars on a trip. And you come back and you find out, Commissioner didn't agree, now you got a three thousand dollar bill. And you used the county funds to do the trip, now you gotta pay the county back. I mean, that's not a good situation.
And it still shows the next expense that the county paid, but then we would also have to report out on the reimbursement, and that gets really complicated.
I don't like that, I don't like to charge the county and then pay it back, I mean, that's, that's not, that's not good practice. You're gonna have some assurance before you leave on the trip that this is gonna be covered by the county, if you put it in court.
That fall under, you can do an executive session prior to travel.
If there's an issue with a pay trip.
That's too fast.
I mean, because a lot of them, like you said, for NATO or other, we would have to worry about that, it's clearly something to. But if there's a situation where there's questions about it, if all of us have free, if we know about it before, then we need to have. Session to do that, but I think that would be a case of case basis. I mean, I don't, I don't know what.
I don't see a scenario where we have an executive session about travel.
Could be, though, you could do it, couldn't be security.
That's security. That, that reminds me, sir, if we have time, and if you and I have a mind to talk, we find out why. Their liabilities, security measures, see why they.
Well, we had talked about, part of the part one. That we deal with the staff. That travel is, travel, it's appropriate, and there's many reasons it should be transparent. Because we're spending people's money, but just from our operation perspective, if an employee is traveling, it's been sanctioned by the commission. They're covering the work comp, they're covered from a liability, liability perspective, I think we want to do the same thing with commissioners. You guys travel, break your ankle, when doing business out there, you'd wanna, you'd wanna be able to cover that with work comp. So this, that's spooky, but it's operating.
So we do have, as a part of our process now, for staff, that there is a, an estimate form. But we are asking employees to put together before they go, that then our division directors approve. Um, and then it is a sanctioned trip. There may be a way we can provide that form to you all, and Lisa and Carol can complete it, and maybe provide it to you in memo form. And then if you wanted me to, in each monthly report that I send you on the fifteenth of each month. We could share exactly what those expenses are. Um, and that way, the responsibility doesn't have to lie with individual commissioners to do that. Um, but we make that information available to all of you, and then how you wanna handle that publicly. Um, you know, we could incorporate it into the quarterly report that Brent does, if that's something you wanted to do. And where you all can handle it from the bench, I just, I think there's a lot of ways we can tackle this depending on what year.
Those reports are talking about after the trip.
Right, but I was thinking that estimate form would be provided to you before the trip was taken. By Lisa and Carol, perhaps they could complete that form and share with the five commissioners, so that at least you're aware. Because I, I do see your point that the other commissioners aren't necessarily lost, but we are spending public funds, so I can totally see both sides of the argument, I'm just trying to. Figure out a way to feed everybody's needs.
I'm really struggling with the term, if you guys always improve money before we spend. This would be a little bit. I struggle with that, it's a little bit, because we get permissioned. Where we're advising and spending.
Well, then I think that's why we need to be able to. All of us should know. And, and I know that has, there's been an issue with that. So I disagree that that should happen, we have to be aware and know what the purpose is and I were going, what, what instead of bringing that to the county. I think that's agreeable, I just don't know the best.
Does Lindsay think, Jessica, that's satisfying? Where you fill that out in advance, share it through your staff. And then post report back, that's satisfying.
And, and bear in mind too, that all of your P cards come to me for final approval, I review to make sure they're all compliant with policy. For P card or anything else. Um, y'all, so we're the ones who would process any per diem costs. So I think finance is in a unique position to be able to. Information to you at any point.
I don't think Lindsay's proposal would. Rest is the bigger issue. We approve expenditure of taxpayer's money. And all we're doing is saying, now you gotta fill out a form for you. The same thing we've been doing in the past, so it's no change, we didn't change a single thing on what happens on point of travel by doing this.
The only distinction for me is that we would be treating you so, who into other departments. So our P card policy applies to any expenses less than ten thousand dollars. The, uh, the county's charter, purchasing charter doesn't kick in until we start talking about more than ten thousand dollars. Department heads are in a position to approve anything less than ten thousand dollars, and so, um. That estimate form is how that happens in departments, I do agree that you all have a very different set of expectations and people that you report to. Um, so that's why I'm trying to, if we can have the form, you all can be made aware of that, but also trying to recognize the security concerns. Okay. The fact that folks are out and away from their homes, just trying to think of a way to do it in an unofficial, non-public. Type way, but then your information is public when you're back.
I think it's, if we look at things that are non-public. We're spending taxpayers' money. We do it all the time, but we do it open and transparent so that everybody knows, spending that money.
Does this pay out of VOCs contingency fund?
No, so it's paid directly out of your operating budget, and if at any time. We were to need to go to the contingency to replenish your budget of forty in your operating fund. I would have to approve that, and Corian would have to notify you that that happened. So there is, there is no way to dip into a contingency without you all being made aware of it.
I, I guess, Commissioner Dennis's point, we do approve a budget item that covers these types of expenditures. We also authorize our, our manager to set up fifty thousand dollars and basically just notify, notifying us what was just done, so there are examples. Where we're not actually debating and voting specifically on, on, on an exact expenditure for exact purpose. The things I handled were basically notified after the fact, I guess, I, I think, go back to what I said earlier, I think the main key is. If I believe travel is important, I have to be able to stand up and defend that to everyone, my colleagues, my staff. And my constituents and my, and my property taxpayers. At the end of the day, if I, if I am, am making a choice of travel, I have to be able to stand up and defend my decision to make travel. And if I think it's a bad, if, if the people out there think it's a bad decision, then politically I'll suffer. Uh, I'll learn my lesson, this is a bad idea, I should have done, I shouldn't have done that. Disclosure and transparency creates accountability. And the question, accountability keeps me making the best decisions, I know that someone's gonna judge me on what I do. So that accountability is, it helps me make the right decisions on, on my choices to travel or not. And so, again, I think this is, we're making this too hard, um, at the end of the day, all I'm asking for, I said this during the budget meeting. Is, is, is we ought to make sure this is transparent and disclosed to everyone, so they know what, what choices we're making. Uh, it can be done after the fact, protect us. But I think, at, at, at the end of the day, it's not like we have electric funds, we just want to make sure that, um. What have we made choices to do, that the people out there have a right to know what we're doing and why do we do it? And we answer to the people. Not, you know, you're not my boss, the people are my boss, and I'm not your boss, and vice versa, so I've got to be able to, to defend my choice. In front of the people who ultimately pay those dollars. And I think that's the one thing we're missing right now. And I don't, I don't mind the idea of pre-travel approval, but it gets into this whole, whole idea about. If we, if, if you tell me you wanna travel somewhere before you travel, I, I, I may have a lot of questions, I'll probably vote no. Because I'm, I'm choosing not to travel on our own purpose, I'm trying to save taxpayer money. So I'm sure I'm making choices not to travel, I would love to go on these trips, I choose not to go, I don't think it's a good use of money, I'm gonna go, no, a lot. And my point is, if we wanna go through that debate every time you got someone else on a trip, then I guess we're gonna do that. And I also have questions about inter-interest, interstate travel. Because I go to Pika ten times a session, sometimes it's on behalf of the county, sometimes on behalf of bills, I believe in, that are not county supported. And, uh, yeah, I pay for those trips generally, but I think if people are gonna make a choice to travel to the Pika. I may not even know about it two days before it happens, because they schedule hearings two days out, or even sometimes the next day. And I make it, I rearrange my schedule and I go. And so, you know, interstate travel, we have KCCA, KAC, that are both interstate, we're not even capturing those discussion items, because. And those are, weren't two nights in a hotel. So it's not just, it's not just out of state travel, it's also interstate travel, so this is, to me, this is just about transparency and accountability, it's not about. Getting permission, it's not about, um. The fact that we don't have funds in the budget for covering travel. I think those are, those are distractions from the real, the real discussion, which is, people have a right to know what's going on.
I'm gonna let everybody know I'm going to go to Manhattan on Monday, we'll be going there and back the same day for the public. Anybody wants to know where I'm at Monday that Friday?
Address.
City. If the policy gets in. Up and back into the state. You spend the night and spend.
KACC, KCCA, actually, so, right, yes.
What if we look at. Closest permission, but if we look at that route, then we should carve out things that are clearly. Kind of relate, like Naco, it's obviously county related, the case, and, and it's obviously county related, but there are other things. When I went to DC last, that I need, would need to make a point and how that's really related. So I can see the difference in those things. I don't know what's the best thing to do there, but I think I see why there would be a difference.
Well, we hate option three, let me take option one and two and bolster them with language.
Or another thing, we, we could actually talk about a travel budget, or let the officials, they just approve that, knowing it's for things like this. That's our responsibility to vote for appropriations of that type of, that type of expenditure, but the details exactly, that's, that can be. Come later, it's just another idea.
I'll change, we have some.
You, you do, but it's not, um, the way the budget is actually approved is the way the state requires it, so it's at a pretty high level. And so what we could do, um, if, if we wanted to do it with a whole lot of eyes on it. Would be to create a VOC travel fund center. And so we would put budget authority specifically in there, and it would only be spent from that area, and then it would be a new section in the budget book. And so you would be able to see two years prior of actual spending from that area. And then also the current year budget and next year's proposed budget, and that way. I mean, it wouldn't get into the details, but it would show how much grant was spent on.
That was the spirit of option three. I'll jump there. If you agree, you'd have to put a code in that for transparency. It does solve a lot of this. That was, that was the idea.
Anything else on travel? Anything else?
Real, real quickly, Lindsay, can you talk to us?
Okay, so, um, the Treasury Department is basically running out of time. To do, uh, the support work associated with the types of arcapunts that we received. And so they sent out a notification late last week advising that this money was going away and then. Or, sorry, the support was going away, and then, uh, earlier this week, the Government Finance Officers Association. Put out an information about a bill that has been proposed. That would do a number of things, it would provide more funding to allow these guys to continue to provide the level of support. Um, that we're used to, uh, it also has a couple of other components that aren't as germane to us about trying to loosen up. The ability to spend the funds, you've already allocated most of ours, and so that has limited value to us. Um, there's also another, some other entities that were not qualified as, and so. There were three parts in the template that they put out that they asked, uh, cities and counties to, uh, push to their legislators. Uh, congressional representatives, so, uh, we took out those latter two and just left in the portion about please. Support the additional funding so they can hire the staff. Um, to continue to provide the service that we need, the risk if we don't have that funding is that. Uh, it delays getting answers, it delays getting frequently asked questions that were then held to down the road. Um, it means that if something comes up that you all have a question about, and I'm reaching out to the Treasury to find out, they will have a delay in getting that to you. So, uh, we worked with. So, uh, we worked with communications to put together some template letters to our three legislators. Uh, Congressman Ness's, Senators Moran and Marshall, um, and basically we are asking for their support solely for the related to the additional resources for Treasury. And so we are hoping that you will let us send it. I don't, I didn't share my experience marketing.
We need to support, pray to read additional funding, so they can monitor a big bucket of funding that they sent out.
Yeah, because they're gonna come and audit us, and so I wanna be in compliance.
Naco sent out an email earlier.
Yes.
Do we need, do we need to sign that letter out? Mission going back to support to what Naco wants, or?
I, I think the commission would be right, but I think there's some time sensitivity, and so since you all are in a position to vote as a board to take that position, I don't know legally if that is something that we can do, or if you can just sign as the chair.
Do you all have any objection to me signing out a letter going back to Naco, they gave us a template that they wanted?
Last thing, uh, this, this setup today, Tom. And I wanna go back and see how everybody got here, we, we could start running commission in this format. The idea was to give you a seat where you could see the screen, see the audience, we could do, we would take these tables away and put audience here, and you could run commission. We, did we ever get an answer?
Now, I, I know them, I'm willing to hear them all.
All of it would be the last, uh, piece of, just something that's part of our experimenting.
Window, I think we're gonna have to bring John downstairs.
Late October, early November.
Okay, well, we just made a announcement at the new board meeting yesterday, that the twelfth, we're gonna be looking at, uh, the contract to do an exploration place, and expect then to come boom, that we're gonna be over at the, at the cornhouse. So there would have to be sometime after October twelfth, then, make that change, but I don't wanna make a change before October twelfth, because we've already got the word out. New opinion of this contract that they
I, I mean, I've got the distribution, this is, and I'm not, I'm not saying we're ready for that, but I'm just saying that that was part of
It's extremely unhandy going over. What we've got here, our staff has the backup everything going there. So, the sooner that we can get something going over there, I think it'd be better for everyone.
Oh, we had it.
Anything else? Jerry, you all.
I'm not smart enough to know which one we need to go to first thing.